...to order at 7:41 and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion by Mr. DeMonica, second by Mr. Salvatore.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero with all members present. The next item is the consent agenda, and I believe we will be approving them without the executive session minutes from 4:23. So the consent agenda would include the regular meeting from 4:23, enrollment report from 5:01, school police report from 4:01, residency truancy report from 5:01. Pleasure of the committee on the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Dunne to approve the consent agenda without the executive session minutes, and second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Next item is a report out of the executive session meeting from 5:14, 2015. There were no votes taken, and I need to vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mrs. Teal, second by Mr. Dunne. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Dr. Thornton, may I have recognition this evening?
Go to Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to recognize three of our high school students for their outstanding artwork. Three students have been recognized by the Woodford Art Association for their very impressive work. In fact, we actually have the work posted right over here, and if you've had a chance to take a look at it, it really is spectacular. So congratulations to our students for producing such beautiful work. So I know that there are at least two of the three students are with us this evening. The other, it's my understanding that he is at the National Honor Society presentation ceremony in the high school, and hopefully he'll be able to join us later. But it's my pleasure to introduce first the Silver Key Scholastic Art Award for the realistic watercolor painting of broken eggshells and eggs to Riley Boyce. Riley Boyce. Next up is the Golden Key Scholastic Art Award. This is a detailed value study of draped fabric tied in an hour, and the Gold Key Scholastic Art Award goes to Melanie Burina. And as I mentioned, hopefully, this young man will be able to join us later. Kyle Richard won a $1,500 scholarship and the opportunity to display his work at the Woodford Art Association Art Show this summer. He is currently at, as I mentioned, the National Honor Society Ceremony next door, and you can see his impressive work here this evening. So hopefully we'll get a chance to congratulate Kyle Richard when he joins us a little bit later on. So congratulations to Kyle.
Next up, I need some help. I need the Teacher of the Year to come on up and join me. Miss Emery. Now, plus you know, we're doing Teacher of the Year now for five years. It's our plaque. We go every year to Teacher of the Year, and now you see Miss Emery is on the perpetual plaque for this year. So before we talk about Kayla, I want to share with you what happened the day we gave her the award. It's always fun to show you what's going on that day in video. About a minute and a half, we went up to the middle school, and there was an assembly for something that Miss Coughlin thought of, and we talked about like a very important situation. And we walked in, and we just kind of did this.
How about Teacher of the Year?
We select one or two of our two women for our year. And this year, after your consideration, analysis, we have looked at Teacher of the Year, this is a teacher that's done a great job of the Chromebook Initiative. She's a really can-do attitude, just a fantastic teacher. And I will put out this teacher after she wins our award, Teacher of the Year, Coughlin, goes on to the state competition for the state teacher. So without any further ado, I'd like to announce our Teacher of the Year, Coughlin, for the 20th game. We have a surprise for her. It's a big one.
We're very proud to recognize Mrs. Emily Burina. She's been working at the local middle school for longer than one week, I think. It's been a year. I started, it was Emily Burina, she was a math teacher. I was a math teacher. She was the young teacher who I worked very closely with. She, when she walked in this school, she started with a very organized and...
I can finish. It's still there. Some reason the video cut out on the line. So I did start with Kayla, Kayla six years ago. I forgot, I've been, you know, it's been from yesterday, but she's a phenomenal teacher. I saw her today that, you know, when she started, her room was set up beautifully within probably 10 minutes of her arrival, and she's maintained that level of just passion for what she does, you know. As the veteran teacher there, I was, it was great to see, but it really stepped up my game, which was great, but then as the administrator, I feel so fortunate to have her as part of my staff. She's a leader in a lot of ways, not only in the math classroom, but throughout the school. She's been phenomenal with assisting us in our integration of the Chromebook Initiative into the school. She's helped out in a number of ways, and she does so in a very quiet manner. So I did make note that she's not always given the accolades that she deserves, so I'm thrilled that we were able to do that now.
So Kayla, in recognition of your inspirational actions and excellence in leadership, congratulations, Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. And once again, Kayla, now goes on to the state competition, and she'll be doing well for us. Good night, Chair.
Thank you. Right home.
Next up, it's a great gift for awards. We also have in the audience the Principal of the Year. So September, please come on up. So Alan Leirad will lead the event to you this evening, but I just wanted to just point out that it's always just fantastic to have, you know, a person like Alan on staff, really, you know, transform the high school these past three or four years. So it really is just my pleasure to have you. Congratulations. And after Natalie, something that wasn't on the agenda, but I wanted to talk about, the school committee got together a few Saturdays ago, and our chair, the school committee also was recognized with a list called the Howard K. Award Outstanding School Committee Leadership. So Ms. Bolio was recognized, so once again, just a great job for you.
So to the artists, you have an art show every year, right? And it's coming up soon, May 30?
20.
20th, at the high school. So I'll share with you that I bought a bunch of your art last year, and it's a mishmash of things that had a nice pop of color, some fun and cool uniqueness, and it's all in my little square box in my office, my cubicle. And I can't tell you how many people have stopped and said, "You have the best artwork in your cubicle." And there's really neat things that they've done with like tissue paper and, you know, pastels and watercolors. So keep up the great work, because I have the coolest most creative cubicle at COVIDian. So thank you very much. Be sure to buy some more. And congratulations to Mrs. Burina. Outstanding job. Next item on the agenda is Chairperson's Report, Funding Formula and the BDP. At this point of our budget cycle, we are working to prepare ourselves for our town council budget meeting. We know that the mayor's provided a budget submission, and the council will be deliberating over that. It's troubling for us, because I think we've struggled to maintain quality programs in our schools. We work really hard, we have tons of talent here, but the proposed budget would provide significant cuts for the district that we don't want to see. We want to maintain the integrity of our program. We want to have students come and stay and be challenged here, whether it's in art, or in sports, or in academics, or in technology. So we have faith that the council will want to hear what our concerns are with the maintenance of our programs and the improvement of our programs. We work a lot with our achievement sub to identify how we can help our district be better. We've identified that we do have a need for interventionists at some of our schools, because we feel that we're not able to close the gap in achievement for those students at a fast enough rate that we want to see for all students. We also have added into our budget the idea behind changing the start time at the high school, given the fact that the high school has the earliest start time of any high school in the state. Blasting your kid out of bed and stick dynamite in the morning to get them to that school on time is really tough, and there's a lot of data that points to the fact that when you change that, it has a huge academic benefit for all students. And we also know Dr. Thornton's budget does include some new technologies in our school and enhancement of the programs that we presently have. So I urge you to be involved with our budget, be involved with the council meetings. They'll all be posted, I think they're posted in the Valley Breeze. And I'd say, you know, on the heels of an announcement of the Principal of the Year, which really has made our community very proud, and it's a well-deserved honor, I want to see our school programs maintain their integrity and improve every day, because that's what the kids in our community deserve. As we have an itemization of the cuts that would be proposed, we'll share those with the public. At this point, we just don't have them. There is a lot of discussion around reduction in programs, and ultimately, if the budget were to be passed as proposed, it would result in reductions to many of our programs. So stay tuned. We'll do our best to get that information out to you, but feel free to reach out to any one of us, because certainly we'll share the information once we have it available. Next item on the agenda is Reports of Standing Committees, Payment Bills. Mr. DeMonica.
Madam Chair, the Fiscal Management Subcommittee met this past Tuesday. We reviewed the bills that were presented to us, and I would make a motion that we approve the payment of bills in an amount of $1,203,000. Let me spell it. $1,203,220.71.
Mr. DeMonica moves passage of payment of bills during the second. Second by Mr. Dunne. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. DeMonica.
Madam Chair, we did again meet on Tuesday. There was a long list of items that we discussed. It was the employee contracts, which we have tabled until June, and we took two items off that list, was the superintendent and assistant superintendents for you to review with the vice chair. And there were other things about us in cost, resolutions for new boiler stuff, floor cleaning, and that will all come on later on. The tabling of the contracts was on a two-to-one motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. Next item is Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, policy did meet on Tuesday night. We had quite the full meet. One of the items was the district wellness policy, which we'll be voting on later on on the docket. And I'll ask Mr. Salvatore, since he is the chairman of the Health and Wellness Committee, to give the synopsis then. Also, we talked... We also had a brief discussion on student attendance policy, trying to figure out what Rye was actually trying to get done, and how we can maybe soften policy a little bit without affecting the results that it has given us. That's going to be a long conversation over the course of the Sunday. Also, Dr. Santa came along and talked to us about the academic support for student absences due to medical reasons, which she suggested an amendment, which we will also discuss later.
Thank you. And Mrs. Teal, Achievement and Communications Subcommittee.
Thank you. We met Tuesday and this evening. We continued our conversations with our elementary school representatives. We spoke with Cumberland Hill and Ashton. It's been a real treat to have everyone come in and explain to us what's going on in their schools, and how they're helping students that are struggling to catch up and then exceed our expectations. There's definitely been some themes with work that needs to continue to be done. There definitely needs to be conversation about perhaps it's gaining the pre-K. There's a definite correlation between success in pre-K, and then continued success in, excuse me, kindergarten and K through five. The expectations for students in the elementary schools are increasing every year, and probably what we experienced in kindergarten is not what children are experiencing now in kindergarten. The expectations are much higher. But I just want to say thank you for everyone that has come and spent the evening with us. It's been very interesting, very enlightening, and very encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Teal. Next item, Building Committee Update. Mr. Fiorello.
I am actually going to ask Mr. Fornano to give a brief update on what is going on with our conversations with Rye and also with the council. Although, the Building Committee will be meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks. I just need to set the schedule for some of the town's actual proceedings.
Did you know, we've been in the process of getting a stage two application approved by the state of Rhode Island, recently hired in Toronto, architectural firm, or EDS, the engineers, paper, sets of study that I passed out some tonight, some that I too seen that I saw. Basically, if you go to section two of that book, is pretty much what I'll talk about. When the Building Committee met, probably, I don't know, maybe six, eight weeks ago, when they finally went through all the different projects on our F cap list, we picked out about a number of projects that we thought were, you know, health and safety-driven, and that we should try to take care of as soon as possible, especially with potentially new rules taking place at the state with how money might be givied up based on, you know, districts that have the worst buildings first and that type of stuff. We thought that to get this work done under the old rules, we have health and safety projects kind of automatically qualified in the past. So we came up with a list, and I think Phil passed out that list. It was about $3.8 million. And that was basically, though, what we estimated Truce Dexo to be, you know, high cost to do these projects. And we hired Toronto, they came in with EDS, and they went through every building, developed this book, so maybe $8 million of projects, but the health and safety is still what we were going first, with the several stages of years of this that we would do, so we could never, never funding or any of that sort of stuff to do the whole thing once. The list now, if you look at section two, first page, they have it broken down by school, and the backup pages kind of dictate, you know, tell you what the projects are. Basically, the same projects, but the cost is close to $5 million, because this has built-in things like soft costs and engineering studies and all that type of stuff. There's one real good piece of it that, you know, kind of like, kind of fried Dr. Thornton and I a little bit. From all the discussions we've had with our architects and engineers and that type of stuff, I think we've worked with some pretty good people, you know, so again, they tell us that this CHIPS program has been adopted nationwide, and it's basically, you know, make sure projects are energy efficient, lean, and all that type of stuff. But basically, all the other states just apply this CHIPS program to new construction. Rye takes the opinion that no matter what the construction project is, you should try to do, you know, make it CHIPS compliant. So that added quite a bit of cost, where we could do univents at either of our middle schools for under $5 million to make it CHIPS compliant, you know, and this, and these are just audio, this isn't for anything like, you know, asbestos or rad or any of that type of stuff. For $400,000, we can make the, replace the univents during the school and have 91% CHIPS compliant as far as noise levels in the classroom. Rye wants you at 99%. To get that other 8%, you add about, almost, you just about double the cost of the project. You have to get into asbestos removal, because now these bigger univents, you have to drill, you know, pipes and stuff into the floors, so there's removal of tiles, asbestos tiles, all that sort of stuff. So for that other 8%, you know, which would be maybe, you know, so if you figure 8% of a school, you have, how many days really is that? You know, 10% would be 18 days, so you know, but for that extra 15 to 16 days where it might be a little bit noisy, and those fans would have to run on I, you have to spend about another $400,000, $500,000 at each school. If they're not CHIPS compliant, they don't approve any of 40% reimbursement on any of your projects. So we've been looking into appeal process, we're not sure we have one, and so that's where we are. So that's basically driving up the cost. We have been told that the entire $4.9 million is going to be approved, and the mayor has committed to put a lease, we fund this to a 10-year master lease, before the council, you know, so that we could get this money and start work as soon as possible. I think it's, we're down the road far enough, but we probably couldn't get the univents in time to do the work now in the summer. That was the goal, because we're not getting really any fresh air into these middle schools, so it's not really healthy. We could probably do the work in September, October, when school started, but we have to look to probably work at Truce at night, or, and you can't go into November to assemble when it keeps running, it becomes very tricky to be replacing univents also. So those are the options we're left with right now, but I just wanted to give everyone an update, and, you know, we met, we had a pretty extensive meeting the other day with all the engineers, architects that are involved, and all our people, as well as the finance director, the mayor. And they basically suggested that, you know, because everyone's kind of been working with this $3.8 million project, that we should probably root the school committee on this again, and give everyone an update where it is, and also probably notify the Little League Committee, so that, you know, Little League Committee, school committee, and council all know where it is, and all, you know, be fine with the new added cost. And that's basically, it's basically the CHIPS program, and, you know, this original essence that I had really engineered and architectural, don't use it yet. I don't know if there's anything else, Monty, that I should add, or you want to add?
Questions?
No, I recognize it's frustrating, understanding that the CHIPS retirement has been difficult at best, especially when you only have a limited amount of resources, and you're looking to prepare it for a lesser cost.
Mr. Dunne?
Just a clarification for myself. So we took that one example you gave, say it's $500,000, it costs us $1 million, but we're getting reimbursed at 40%. So are they all of that almost double the cost to become CHIPS compliant? I guess my real question is, is it worth to go for the reimbursement if we're getting 40% back, if we're paying double anyway?
That's what we were looking at ourselves, we were saying, you know what, it's going to be, you know, $900,000, 40% of that is 3/60, it's, you know, it's going to be more than $4 change, we just, you know, not get a reimbursement on this. But what we were told is that if you don't take a reimbursement on that, you don't get reimbursement on any of this. So you'd never get, they wouldn't allow you to get reimbursement on any of the $8 million. So we had no choice but to be CHIPS compliant or do the whole evening, towel project, but $40% reimbursement. Dr. Thornton, was that your, was that your understanding already? We have to do that, it'd be the whole project that we reimburse.
So if you didn't put that project in, if that project wasn't on our list anyplace, and we just did it, and they didn't know about it, would that still make the state, you know what I'm saying?
Well, basically, maybe if it wasn't on your list, then, you know, maybe we'd never gone for reimbursement, you know, maybe we'd be okay, but...
I'm just thinking for going forward, obviously, honestly, it's not a list now, we're going forward. If that continues to be the case, maybe there's some things we'll review, we'll decide on to put on the list.
They force you to hire a commissioned agent to oversee your engineer and architect, and your engineer and architect are required to put this book together. I really thought they should only look at our health and safety things and only do the work on that, but they were forced to go through entire, you know, every school and look for every type of potential problem we have. That's why we ended up with a list of $8 million, and we thought it cost $70,000 to produce. So that engineer that you hired can't go out there and like turn the other way up projects, they're going to have to...
Yeah, just to clarify, though. Just to clarify, though, that's one of the reasons why Rye wants that report, so they see every single problem in the school districts, so that we can't try to cut them short, so that they have to force us to do the projects the way they want us to do them.
So it's not the best news, but I think the $4.9 million would be approved.
And the fee to do the assessment, there was, you said, $70,000?
$78,000 for the engineer and architect to put this initial report together.
Unbudgeted.
Yeah, we have to, we found another budget, but what's the budget?
Mr. Fornano, we get the 40% reimbursement on that, and we're also...
Yeah, yeah, any, all the soft costs, this whole thing, everything's down to $40% reimbursement. Once you do one project, if you do one project that was $50,000, you get reimbursement, everything that, that...
Am I clear in understanding that if we get the 40%, it doesn't come back to the schools anyways, it goes back to the general fund for the town?
Well, what it does is it comes back into the school, it's a public aid, and that tradition goes into the town budget. We've, in the years, have done like that. The last year of Mayor Key's administration, Dr. Thornton and I were successful, I think, at lobbying him that he was going to stop allowing us to keep that money, so they would come back to the schools. Matter of fact, that commitment, that's how they, that's why they funded the $600,000 of doors, because we said that money was going to come to us, if you go to handle up the doors, and they went with that, so we could do the security laws. But in a little bit of time, over the years, we did that major project that, you know, pretty much took care of all the, you know, internal costs of the district. But I don't know what, you know, I don't know what the administration would hope that, if they let that money come back to us, obviously, if we do this amount of money, they have to borrow for, you know, for bonds and that type of stuff, because you got to start to build the capital reserve fund with that money.
Awesome. Thank you, Alex.
Okay, thanks.
Next item on the agenda is, we have a public hearing, reading of policies. We have Mr. Fiorello, want to take this from here?
Sure. Actually, the district wellness policy, which is I, went through Mr. Salvatore's Health and Wellness Committee, so I let him discuss health and wellness. I already want to make the lady. A little synopsis, I'm going to bore everyone. So according to the General Law 162128, we're required to have a district health and wellness policy. So that means we had to come up with a subcommittee. That subcommittee, per the state of Rhode Island, has to be one member, thank you, one member of the school committee, administration, which was Assistant Superintendent Bob Mitchell, and then members of the public as well, which I can see a couple in the audience right now, students, some principals, phys ed teachers, and anybody else in the community that wanted to get involved. So what we did, and I apologize, we also worked with Corinne Weatherall from Rhode Island Department of Education, correct, Mr. Mitchell? I always get her mixed up somehow with the Department of Health.
Yeah, I believe she's a consultant at the Department of Health.
Okay, okay. A consultant with the Department of Health that has ties into Rhode Island Department of Education. She has been phenomenal. At first, Department of Health came out with original, I want to say, six districts At first, Department of Health came out with the original, I want to say, six districts that were required to come out with a policy. And then, we didn't make that first segment, so we were picked for the next segment that we participated in. She helped us put together a document, twenty pages, but it is, it's really a kind dry document that really outlines everything as it relates to nutrition, physical activity, district health education. So we put together that policy and I want to board everybody with what it is, and you'll see everything coming out. So now that we have the policy, now we're going to come out with a, an area within, we're going to build awareness to the community, also to local PTOs, each school, and how everybody else can get involved as it relates to nutrition, health, and wellness. Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Mitchell, did you have anything to add to that?
No, any.
I think you summarized it well. I, I think the only thing that I would add is, and you did allude to this, is the fact that it really was a true collaboration. It was, Mrs. Dovens is here, we had parents, as you mentioned, several administrators, several teachers, community members, Mrs. Rosemary, Dr. Rosemary Riley Shamot is on the committee. So we, I think the exciting thing is that we have a, you know, a significant group of really passionate people who are really looking forward to doing some great things in the district around health and wellness.
Yes, and Mrs. Dewey as well, who's a major contributor to our policy, also with part of our awareness of, you know, five K and getting everything out there, so, thank you very much.
So this time I've got to ask that the policy, I one, district wellness policy be read into the minutes. Also, the academics, I four, academic support for student absences due to medical reasons, which is just a one-line amendment, also be read into the minutes. There was no action taken on the student promotion retention policy, nor have we even proposed any changes to student attendance at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Fiorello, could you just highlight what the, the change was in the student absences for medical reasons?
I was going to wait for later, okay. Essentially, the, the academic supports for students who are on medical leaves for over twenty-one days, those, like tutoring would not take place until the twenty-one days. There's so much retention that could be lost in that time, so, Dr. Sant, Dr. Sant, if I misinterpret this, please correct me. Instead of waiting the twenty-one days, if we know the student will be out for the twenty-one days, we can start the tutoring much earlier, just so that they can never lose anything. And one line is actually just twenty-first day or sooner, if needed necessary, and approved by the superintendent, assistant superintendent, or director of special education. That's the only change that's been made.
Got it, thank you. All right, given that this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that would wish to speak, either for or against any of these policies? Yes, sir?
I just want to speak on something separate than this.
We have comments for the public next, so, once we finish the hearing, we'll, we'll give you that opportunity. So no one is here to speak on for or against or either of these policies? No? All right, so we will call the public hearing closed for the policies and next up on the agenda is comments from the public. So sir, if you'd like to come up to the microphone, it's your opportunity to speak.
My name's Bob Surin, my granddaughter, Haley Surin, goes to the Ashville Elementary Schools. And a few weeks back, we ran into a little problem that I talked to Mrs. Scott Aronik about, and she said the country's school committee, and she spoke to a couple of years earlier on the matter. And when the bus, I went to pick up at the bus stop and the bus came, the bus driver said Haley's not on the bus. So I called the school and there's nobody there to answer the phone. And sometimes these things fall to the crack, obviously, people have a lot on their agenda it seems like. And sometimes these things are unaware and need to be addressed, so that's why I'm here tonight to address it. To see that we can maybe have somebody there till four thirty, because we have school activities there, till four thirty at the school. And some people that were disappointed that you had basketball that night, so they thought nothing was wrong, but suppose something was, and the bus doesn't come until, at the bus stop, until, today it came at three forty-seven, and that was early for the bus. And most of the time it comes like it's ten o'clock or five eleven, sometimes it's even five past four. And Mrs. Scott Aronik, they told me that nobody is there after three forty-five. And that's before the bus even gets to the bus stop to drop the kids off, they even know if there is a problem, to call the school about. So my concern is, obviously, for my granddaughter, but obviously, everybody's concerned here, that's why you're on the school committee, is you're a lot concerned for the children. And I just think that that would be a big concern, that you have nobody to call if somebody's not on the bus and the school's already closed, what do you do? I mean, I had, my heart was in my throat, so I got to the school to find out what was going on, that you had basketball. The school's open till four thirty with the activities, like I said before, so I feel that somebody should be there till four thirty to answer the phone. Even this just to say that I couldn't make it and one of the other parents here that I know could take my granddaughter home, at least something could, somebody could pick up the phone, you can trans, you know, relay that message to whoever's doing basketball or whatever activity they're taking. So that's my main concern right now, is that somebody be there till four thirty to answer the phone, if there's a problem for the student or the parent or grandparent who's ever here but they can't.
Thank you. So, I, I think this might be one of your first times here, I don't recognize you, but we, we don't have dialogue or debate during the school committee meetings. We certainly discuss the matters with Dr. Thornton and sometimes these matters would get referred to one of our policy committees. So I would, this is the first I've, I've heard Mr. Salvatore share a little bit with me about the conversation, so I appreciate coming.
Scott Aronik told me to come to mention to you, because I had already discussed it with her.
Yeah.
She told me, I think it would be a better form to come here to present it, so that's why I'm here.
No, I, I appreciate that, it's, it's good to hear that and I, as we develop our bus routes during the year, maybe we can be considerate of that fact around, you know, how, how do we get in touch with the school if it is, you know, post hours?
Right, you know, like I said, if you have activities at the school at three, four thirty, somebody should be there to answer the phone. I mean, the school's obviously open, if people are there.
Yeah. Thank you, appreciate that very much. Next item on the agenda, anyone else in the public wish to speak this evening? Mr. McClellan, welcome.
Yes. I guess I've got to sit down. Madam Chairman, members of the school committee, I'd just like to give you an update in reference to capital improvements.
Mr. McClellan, I don't know that the microphone's on, just a little switch on the top.
Hello?
Oh, that, yes, now it's on.
You got it? Okay. Madam Chairman, members of the school committee, I'd just like to give you an update in reference to the, the governor's proposed budget in reference to capital improvements. Twenty million dollars has been allocated, which is like a drop in a bucket, if you stop and think about it. In reference to the needs, I think Providence is, you know, they had capital projects for their schools, two hundred and fifteen million. Yeah? Oh, two oh nine, I'm sorry. But, in reference to the conversation tonight, this latest mandate by the Board of Regents, Mr. Promiano and myself who were discussing it, I think that can be amended by the General Assembly. We really didn't have any knowledge of it to just to apply to new construction. And I think that would actually resolve the problem. Instead of digging schools up, you put them on a roof, you know, the ventilation systems. So, we're keeping a, you know, a good eye on things, you have a lot of people that are dedicated to working for our public school systems up there. But, after the meeting, if the superintendent would have a few minutes, I've got some things on, questions on rest and finance tonight, in reference to the percentages, you know, given to our public schools, you know, the allocations versus non-public schools. And, there were quite a few questions. With that said, it's, it's getting pretty heated up there, so I just want to keep this informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Make sure the windows stay open there. Anyone else for comments? All right, next item on the agenda, we have old business discussion under vote to approve employee contracts and as Mr. Demonica reported, we are, we have tabled those until a later date and it, I think largely was out of the concern that we had had around the budget and the, the risk of, of costs that, that potentially could be involved by approving these contracts. So are you moving, Mr. Demonica, to table them for this meeting?
Madam Chair, I am moving to table this till June. I see many of our administrators in the audience tonight and I know they are concerned about the contracts and getting them renewed and we hope to resolve that very quickly. Thank you.
Terrific, well, thanks very much. So, Mr. Demonica moves to table the employment contract, so the second, second by Mr. Dunne. All is in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
And that motion carries six to one with Mr. Fiorello in the dissenting. Next item on the agenda is the New England Secondary School Consortium presentation.
Yes, we have Principal Vio Tenero along with Dyer from NESSC, so take it away, gentlemen.
Do we, do we call you Pody?
Whatever you call him, just sort of lean forward a little and address him.
We shall do so.
Lasted for a minute in my office.
I want to thank you for letting me take a minute to introduce myself and speak about the New England Secondary Schools Consortium Personalized Learning Initiative. So my name is Reed Dyer, I work for Great Schools Partnership, which is a nonprofit organization based out of Portland, and we work across the nation, but really intensely with secondary schools in New England and around New England. And we also coordinate the League of Innovative Schools throughout New England, as well as the New England Secondary Schools Consortium. Now, Cumberland High School's been a member of the League of Innovative Schools for many years and, you know, always proud to be associated with and affiliated with the great work that's been going on at the high school here. As I hope you know, Cumberland was recently named one of only twenty schools to be part of the New England Secondary Schools Consortium's Personalized Learning Initiative. And that selection indicates the school's commitment to creating rigorous personalized learning environments for students, as well as what you've already done and plans to really be an ambitious leader across the region, all of New England, and really the nation in terms of personalized learning. You've done extensive work at the school, naming and identifying high outcomes and standards for kids, developing status-based grading practices, developing and working on authentic assessments across all content areas in the high school. Really intensive teacher professional development and collaboration is going on and, and your move towards one-to-one computing for, for school, for students. And all of this is leading towards, we really believe, increased engagement and investment from students in their own learning and really more flexible ways for them to learn and grow as they move through your school system and get ready to go into college and career from here. So, as part of the initiative, I am a school coach that's been assigned to work with the school to help move your work forward. I've actually spent six days at the school so far this spring in classrooms and then really working a lot, I was talking around the other administrators at the high school, sort of assessing where you're at and creating some strategic plans for continuing to move forward. And I will be here multiple times a month over the next couple of years to provide support in that way. And hopefully, I'm going to add value in terms of really thinking about classroom practice, community engagement, strategic planning, and potentially even as the board continues to look at your policies and how they align with the school's continued evolution to make sure that those are aligned with the vision of, of where the school continues to go. And so finally, I, I just want to emphasize one thing, of the schools that were selected, notably Cumberland is the largest school. And I think that is worth highlighting, because to build a really rigorous personalized environment is frankly more challenging at a larger school. There are some schools that are much smaller, this school in Vermont, so that's less than a hundred kids, K to twelve. And so, when you talk about holding all kids to high standards and also making sure that there's voice and choice for children, doing that in a school that size is very different than a school this size. And so the fact that you are selected in the largest one in the region, I think really speaks to both what you've accomplished so far and the fact that you have a clear ambitious vision for continuing to move forward. So I, I thank you for, you know, letting me be part of that and I look forward to really challenging Alan and, and the rest of the faculty at the high school to continue moving forward over the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll, I'll just say, in, in hearing more about it, and we have the assistant principals and the principal at one of our meetings, it really offers the opportunity for every student to, who, who might be looking for something that's unique and challenging. I'm really looking forward to seeing what the outcomes look like for those students who are looking more for trade-related work versus that kid that's that high achieving, going to be the president kid, to the, to the one that's absolutely struggling and needs our support to, to make it all come together. So, you know, we've been engaged with this along the way and I've been excited to see, A, the energy at the high school around making this happen, but also B, the, the potential that it has for all, for all students. So thank you very much for coming on down, appreciate it. I think we're good? Yes, thank you.
Well, our principal is with us, I have the next two topics for him. I asked him to come by and talk to us about, two years in that, almost, with our new high school model, I wanted to give his insight on that piece. He also wanted to share briefly about a grant Alan received for a room makeover at the high school.
Thank you, I thank you for the recognition here tonight. I think I'm so grateful to come into a community that was so welcoming three years ago, which used to be so supportive, whether it's elected officials or business leaders or parents in the community. Our, our students impress me every day, we saw some of them this evening, just some of our artists. Our teachers are working exceptionally hard to take what is already good practice really to the next level. And it's great to work, I think, on an entire administrative team, really K through twelve, very supportive central office, and I think all the way to the school committee also. I think that there's been, that there's been a real alignment to ensuring that we are providing the best possible student experience that we can at the high school and there's been a real urgency around that, tremendous amount of support around that, and I thank you for that continued, continued support, because it's just so important, especially in times when, when budget cycles get difficult. We want to remain comprehensive and I know that you'll fight for that, so I appreciate that, that recognition here tonight. When it comes to the high school model, we're two years into changing the, the model where we have assistant principals for teaching and learning and also deans of discipline. I think that we've had some well-documented changes in expectations and academic performance at the high school and also school culture changes. I was an assistant principal for seven or eight years and doing the job of discipline and trying to move a school academically is a very difficult thing and very honestly, discipline takes up more time at times than move it, and takes away from the academic side. And so, this split has been very, very, very good. We've been able to, double AP offerings, we've been able to expand our STEM offerings, our pathway development has increased substantially, certainly moved the standards-based system and our performance assessments at the high school. I've seen the institution of a freshman academy, a really laser-like focus on instructional strategies. And even things like the annual initiative around Par One or Paying It Forward. You know, our, our students have really embraced that challenge. And in two years, they raised just under $40,000 for something like cancer research. So a pretty amazing emphasis we've been able to have on academics. And along with that, I think you've seen our graduation rates since 2010 go from 81% to 88%. And we're certainly shooting over the 90s as we continue to move forward. Seen that overall dropout rate decrease. And we've certainly seen an improvement in many of our standardized tests. Although those are changing right now. But especially in reading and writing, we've, we've even seen improvement in all those subgroups. And our AP enrollments alone have gone from about 118 students that took exams to over, just over 500 students that are taking those AP exams. So we're really happy about that. Along with that 8K enrollment, by the way, we're very pleased that the number of students scoring a three or above has also increased. Our percentage has come down a bit as we expanded the pool, but our percentage of students, we have 45 more students earning three, earning credits for college. This, this past year than did three years ago. And I think that's a big deal and a great savings for families. From the disciplinary side, our disciplinarians are certainly more than just disciplinarians. I mean, they're there to improve student culture. And we've certainly seen a lot of improvement there. Our chronic absenteeism in a couple of years has dropped from 22% to 14%. Our total student referrals have dropped from 2,319 two years ago to 922 this year, which I think is an impressive sign of where the school culture is headed. And our suspension rates have gone from 395, suspension down to 149. We continue to look at that data. There's continual places we can improve when we look at this data. I know that Dr. Santino talked about some of the disproportionality in some of the groups that are suspended. But we're looking at that, trying to make it better every single day. Our two assistant principals for teaching and learning have been able to really focus on differentiated professional development for the faculty. They have been able to focus on coaching teachers. We've been able to focus on bringing in this past year and bringing in over $70,000 in grant funding for the school, whether it's been from the Breakthrough Schools Initiative or Perkins or legislative grants. And so that's helped to move a lot of this work forward. And I think in the end, these four people and myself, also the five together, that leadership team, we meld very well, which is a good thing. It's a very good team. And the model is a good one. It's one that we need to keep going. And really thankful for the, the two assistant principals, teaching and learning for Scott Cappan, for Chris Skirka, because they've done a really amazing job. So that's that part. Any questions on that at all? Now the extreme classroom makeover? So yes, I won a raffle, I guess we could call it. So we won an extreme classroom makeover for one of our classrooms. And so WB Mason is donating furniture and time and designers to us, whiteboards probably also. We have a company called Shaw Carpeting that is donating the carpeting for the entire room. And there's a national furniture company called Artco Bell that is donating all the furniture. So the furniture alone, somewhere around $12,000 for the room itself. I think in total, the, the grant will be around $20,000. And we've decided to make a sort of think tank, design thinking room that, that almost any classroom can utilize in H210. And when you close the room with that door after walking in, it's going to feel like you're in a Google office like you'd see on TV. You know, the soft seating and the different heights, the all the furniture that can be moved around. It's comfortable. It's a, it's a new design. And so for us, I really want it to become a example of what the rooms of the future can be here at Cumberland High School. And we're going to have the state principals visit it next year once it's done. And we'd like you to visit it also because we'd love to see five or 10 rooms a year move in that direction as we, as we go forward, at least one a year. But we're really excited about that. I think the kids will, kids will be excited about that one also, so.
Any questions? Mr. Salvatore.
Mr. Tenero, again, congratulations on this, Molly. I'm just kind of curious. So did you have to take a picture of like an old classroom that was dilapidated or, I mean, not that we have any, but you know.
What I did is I went to the trade show at the casino for WB Mason. And my name was put in a box and I won it. That's, so no pictures, but we did take before pictures.
Did you see Mrs. Patton at the casino room?
Just kidding. Defer comment.
All right. So just, so it's going to be used as kind of a free space. So it's not like a lucky teacher won that really awesome classroom. So it's going to be utilized multipurpose.
Yes, free space. And it only has, it's a smaller room, so you're talking maybe 15 of the hard type of seats, but then more comfortable seating. So it's a small room. We also are thinking of a student, providing students a space either before, at the end of the day, that have difficulty connecting with the school and have some attendance issues to give them a safe place to go in and check in with a teacher at the beginning of the day, maybe have breakfast in there. So a lot of different ways you can utilize it.
That's awesome. We'd love to see the evolution of it. That would be great. And we'd love to have a school committee meeting there. Hold a microphone to it.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next item on the agenda, district disproportionality in special education presentation.
Can I confer a statement? That's okay?
Not a problem.
First, I want to thank you for allowing me to come this evening. I'm Dr. Santino. Point to be at April 9th. Unfortunately, I was unable to come that evening. So I want to thank you. I'm absolutely thrilled to be in Cumberland. It's a fabulous district to work in. That's the good news. We are required, all special educators in the state of Rhode Island, in order to obtain our federal funds through the Department of Education, are required to report out at certain times of the year, certain pieces of information. And tonight's information is regarding disproportionality, which essentially means that there is a level of maybe unequally in how students are being found eligible. So we're looking at whether or not the kids are being, are kids in specialized or whether or not they're being overrepresented or underrepresented. And they look at specific demographic groups of students, all different types of ethnicity, as well as each type of disability label, which of course 13 of. They look at whether or not the services and programs are a result of inappropriate identification. If it's significant, then they start putting some numbers into it, which in our case looks at, they're looking at 2.5% risk ratio over the national average over two years. It used to be a 3.0 risk ratio. Two years ago, they lowered it to 2.5. So meaning if you started to improve, went from like a 3.0 to 2.8, they still be found disproportionate. So when might disproportionality exist? If kids are necessarily placed into special education programs, if children are at risk for special education placement due to inadequate instruction in a general education classroom, or when the quality of special education program inhibits educational progress and decreases the likelihood of return to a general education classroom. So they look at all the data we give them, including what percentage of time students are out in the regular environment versus the specialized environment. They look at home suspensions, over 10 days occurring. They look at all that data and give us some feedback. It's all good. The risk ratio is 2.5. I don't need to belabor that. They only, they only will count a group that has 10 students or more. So if it's a real outlier group of one or two, they're not going to count that as necessarily as being hard disproportionate. Plus, they're not allowed to use any smaller group because then they're accidentally identifying that particular group because there's not that many students within it that makes sense. So Cumberland was found, and they used, they used data from December 2013, so I will tell you that. So this is not up to date by the year. It's always, almost always a year behind and a little bit more than a year behind. We were identified by RIDE in December 2013 as being overall identification of students in specialized. In other words, a very high ratio in their estimation, that we have an over-identification in specific disabilities and that we have an over-identification in suspensions of students with special needs or within specific categories of greater than 10 days within the year. Overall, in overall identification, they determined, even though we've decreased from June 2012 to now, and I used May 2015, so this is brand new data. We have gone from 16.64% of our students being identified within special education, down to 15.59% of our students being in special education, which is actually not really a terrible number. If you can think that the state just a few years ago was at about 22% of students being identified in special education. So I was actually quite thrilled. I think when they, when you look at, it's hard to say.
Don't use it in the main office, please. Don't use it to the main office.
You really can't get an answer to that, although I think they're looking around 11 to 12% is what occurs in the natural world. So that's what I think is the number, but I have never been, received that as our, you know, here's your goal. Either as May, we still look at our students and look for eligibility processes. And this district has process and procedures well, well established and are utilized by all the staff. So I'm not concerned about those components. We have some specific disavowalate categories that we are identifying in. One of them is, and you can see, even though we've gone down, I only have data from 2012. Otherwise health-impaired Caucasian, again, they really disaggregate the data. Otherwise health-impaired is a disability label that's used for students with medical conditions that impact significantly impact education and therefore requires specialized instruction. These are students that have Tourette's Syndrome, significant epilepsy. Rhode Island recognizes Lyme and Agonism as one, not something that's typical in other parts of this country. And the Tendinitis Autoimmune Activity Disorder also can be found under otherwise health-impaired. We've gone down from 2.8 to 2.6, but because we're over 2.5 for over two years, we're still considered to be disproportionate in our risk, over the national risk ratio of 1.07. Does that make sense? Okay. The other, the other disorder is autism spectrum disorder, also Caucasian, from 2.2 to 3.2, that's stayed very stable. The difficulty with this particular disability is that, and I talked to RIDE about this one specifically, is you're saying we're over-identifying or we may not use the right procedure. In this district and most districts, we use clinical and neuropsychological evaluations that the district pays for at a significant cost. This is done outside the school by medical professionals. So I'm not sure how we can be accused of over-identifying. I think there's a national risk. That's a, that there's a tremendous amount of students with autism spectrum disorder. And we don't really have control of our neurological communication disorder. I think I used the example earlier that it's like saying you have too many people that are having heart attacks. I mean, we don't really have enough control over that. When I talked to the Department of Ed, they said, yes, we're aware of that, but it's also what the federal, the federal government's requiring. We've had the same argument with feds and there's something we can do about it. So that one I would take with a grain of caution. Speech and language, specifically within the Hispanic culture, our ethnic group, started at 3.9, has come down to 3.3. Still higher than the risk ratio and has been over 2.5 for over two years. So we continue to look at that, but those in general, there's specific disability categories. Do you have any questions about specific? And here's the one, and I'll definitely caution you to tell about the suspension data. Under state regulations, we're not allowed to, and under IDA, we're not allowed to suspend students with special needs or the state of Rhode Island, any student for greater than 10 days without providing them services. So they can receive maybe an in-school suspension because then it's not a suspension of service. But they really can't be suspended out of school without the service. I will say that we believe that part of this, and I can only say part of it, is probably a coding issue that occurred at the high school and possibly at the middle school in that if a school, what, a student was staying for an after-school in-school suspension, they may have been coded as suspended out and not as in-school and therefore appears that it's suspended over 10 days suspension for a student. However, that being said, we currently had, you can look at the data, started out in 2010, 2011, 17 regulated education students, 11 specialized. And now we're at 2013, 2014, we had seven regulated students suspended greater than 10 days and 17 students with special needs who are suspended greater than 10 days. Where typically when something like this happens for more than two years, we're required by the state to write an improvement plan. I'm going to be on top of that and just write a plan already just to put it into our grant so that they understand that we're doing some other things with the help of the principal of the year. And then you're going to be former principal of the year, you know, after this year. We're working on making sure the coding is correct as well as the deans, but also we're looking at next, next year. I need to use the word add. What we've done is reconfigured some of our specialized positions up in the high school. And we're adding a positive alternative to school suspension classroom so that it is happening during the day. And we maybe can decrease this number. That's overall how disproportionate our plan is to continue to work towards. I do think the process and procedures in place are correct. I have asked the state, again, what was their evidence for lack of processes being in place? And I don't really have an answer to that. And I can tell you, I've never really gotten an answer to that in any other district that I've been in. So I'm not really sure if there is a rubric or some form of true evidence. They're just saying your numbers are too high. What it does make us do is look at, are we doing processes correctly? Are we looking at eligibility? I do plan to work with staff on a little more finesse around looking at evaluations, a little more finesse around identifying, what is those evaluations really tell you? Is that true? What true disability label does that fall under? Sometimes we default to otherwise health-impaired when really it may fit under something that people feel uncomfortable saying, like an emotional disturbance. Or it makes people feel uncomfortable to say that the student has, you know, significant intellectual disability. Because sometimes by default, because people feel uncomfortable meanings, they will put it into otherwise health-impaired, it really fits somewhere else. So we're looking at that. The coordinators have been tremendously helpful in doing that work throughout the district. Thank you very much.
Quick question. Are we disproportionately disproportionate, disproportionate to other districts of our size?
No, I would tell you that most districts would have one or two categories in which they're disproportionate. It just depends. Here, it's just a different flavor. Here, it's otherwise health-impaired. Another district, it may be speech language. Those are probably the two most common with emotional disturbance being right up there. Most districts are not disproportionate anymore in specific learning disabilities because RIDE has given really strict guidance on how you identify kids. The rest of the disability labels, they truly don't have good guidance and/or criteria and/or forms. We have to go by the federal definition and look at that. I will tell you, other states, there's very specific information regarding each disability with specific criteria that you're looking for with checkboxes, but it doesn't occur in Rhode Island. So yeah, I'm kind of throwing it back to RIDE's lap just a little in that I think if they gave more specific guidance, like they have done for specific learning disabilities, that we may not have the list level of disproportionality.
Thank you.
I sent that to them too, so I'm not speaking out still.
I appreciate that very much for doing that. Mr. Fiorello.
Dr. Santino, do these numbers also include children that are out of district replacement?
Yeah, when we have any grand under RIDE, would incur all of our students, all of our students, both in addition or in out of district. It would not collect our suspension information though from out-of-district kid, I don't believe. And we only have about 18 students right now in out-of-district replacements, which I have to say, very publicly, that's atypical, atypical for district the size. Typically, you see a minimum of about 50 of a district the size. That's a tremendous cost savings that you've supported the clinical work and all those other components that allow our programs to be successful right here in the district.
Thanks to you. Anyone else? Thank you. That was a great summary.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I think so, not that disproportionate. Unfortunately disproportionate. Got my agenda back here. So next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote to approve employee contracts for superintendent and assistant superintendent. We are going to table those. So I need a motion to table those items.
Make that motion, don't you?
Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dunne and Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And the motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion and a vote to approve amended policies. Mr. Fiorello, I'll turn this over to you.
The first one up is I-1 district loans policy, which Mr. Salvatore has already re-quietered. This policy did pass three This policy did pass 3-0 in the policy subcommittee. I would recommend passage at this time.
Mr. Fiorello, it's passage of I-1, the district wellness policy. And a second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? Given the extent of...
Oh, sorry, Mr. Duffy, too quick.
Just a quick question on that. So this district wellness policy, does it affect any of our other policies that we previously had in place, where we're going to have to go back and remove other policies due to this policy?
Then it's going to be under review.
Mr. Salvatore.
Yes, Mr. Duffy, we did have an older policy that was seven pages, so updated. It's all you. More along the lines of, because it's just so inclusive, it might touch other policies, and we might have to remove language from other policies that now contain within this, that's all. But I think, thank you.
And my quick question was just around communication, given that it does have an impact on various schools at various levels. Besides just posting it online, is there any sort of strategy around that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Mr. Fiorello.
No.
Fiorello. If I say it three times, I'll get it right. Yes, our committee, Health and Wellness Committee, we are putting together an action plan on how to roll this out. So it actually takes place at the start of the next school year.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, so we have a motion, and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0. Nice job to everyone on the wellness team. Next item, Mr. Fiorello, we have the academic support one, is that correct?
Yes, I-4 academic support for student absences due to medical reasons. Dr. Santo made a suggestion for amendment, which I feel is very common sense and very proactive. At this time, I would move the passage.
So removing passage of I-4 academic support. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dutton. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0. And then I-8 and J-2, there was no action on those policies at this point. Okay, so we will just leave them here. Next item, discussion and our vote to approve resolutions. We have a generator of boiler control replacement, floor cleaning equipment, and electrical equipment. Mr. DeMonica, I'll turn this over to you.
Madam Chair, this was in finances past Tuesday, and was approved on a 3-0 vote. SCP-R5-2015-07, it's a resolution authorizing the power on the school committee to execute a purchase order for a commercial, with commercial electric of these problems to replace the generator at the high school that's connected to the transitional building, and an amount not to exceed $52,719. It is coming out of the facility budget. I'd move the passage.
Mr. DeMonica moves passage of SCP-R5-2015-07, second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries 7-0.
X-1, Madam Chair, is SCP-R5-2015-08. It's a resolution authorizing the power on the school committee to execute a purchase order for Connecticut Controls Corporation for Connecticut, for some controls for the high school boilers, in an amount not to exceed $20,890. We have some older technology in there that we're updating, so we can control our clock a little bit better. I would move passage, the amount of $20,890. This is coming out of the facility budget as well.
Mr. DeMonica moves passage of SCP-R5-2015-08. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dutton. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0.
Next, Madam Chair, is SCP-R5-2015-09, a resolution for the purchase order of Sure AZ, it's an automatic floor scrubber to be used at the wellness center. The amount is $7,620, and this is coming out of the facility budget there as well. I'd move the passage.
Mr. DeMonica moves passage of SCP-R5-2015-09. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dutton. Question for you, Mr. DeMonica, is this for like cleaning gym floors, and do you expect it to be used elsewhere in the district?
I'm not sure if it's going to be used elsewhere in the district, or do they have to get transported there? Sedesco has, you know, had bought an equipment for us some years ago, and this is just a replacement metal, but not.
Wow. Okay, so that was item three. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0. Next item, SCP-R5-2015-10.
Madam Chair, this was in finance, was approved through the zero. It's a resolution authorizing the school department, school committee to execute a purchase order with CX TAC of Syracuse, New York, to purchase one port and four switches in an amount not to exceed $5,053,000, if you want cents. It is coming out of the technology budget, and if you have any questions, just the chair, that's enough.
Be I in your favor?
I think that's the case.
Thank you. So we have SCP-R5-2015-10, electrical equipment, one port force switches. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Teal, Mr. Fiorello. Any questions for Mr. Chandler? Hearing that? All in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0. And the last, please.
Last is SCP-R5-2015-11. This is a resolution empowering the school committee to execute a purchase order with CDW-G to purchase 10 complete chrome book cots, in an amount not to exceed $92,937.50, and this is coming out of the technology budget. And this will be spread out among the schools, the cots.
All ready. And you're moving passage of SCP-R5-2015-11. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dutton. Any further discussion? Mrs. Teal.
I just, I'm going to have to vote against this, while I'm strong supporter of chrome books, and I think they've been transformational in how learning is conducted, excuse me, conducted in the schools, given the state of our budget and the concerns that we face of what we may end up being cut. I can't support this at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, we'll look that for the record. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 6 to 1, with Mrs. Teal voting against. Next item on the agenda is discussion and our vote to approve overnight student field trips, the middle school student trip, North Cumberland Middle School, Leport, Washington, DC, November 2015. Dr. Masterson, please.
We actually have two trips for Washington before you. The first one would be the seventh grade trip, which we typically do every year, which happens in the fall. And we're also adding an eighth grade trip, which we're doing part two for Washington. We find that there's a lot of strong appetite for students who like to, who may not entertain the Quebec idea, and would rather see the part two in Washington. There's a lot we can see there, and obviously we have a lot of families who would make the year the pilgrimage anyway, and that's Washington as a nation's capital.
Okay, so this is for the seventh grade trip, or the eighth grade trip, or both?
We had asked for it to be extended for both.
Okay.
We felt it was important, the eighth grade Washington trip was approved tonight, because students have to take an option, whether they're going to Quebec or Washington, they cannot choose both. That was built, that was a little important stat, we wouldn't have students missing more than one day of school doing the overnight trip.
Got it. Any questions? legislature of the committee on this item? Okay, so we have motion by Mr. Fiorello. Second, second by Mr. Duffy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? 7-0.
Appreciate, I'll be back soon, yes.
Soon as, we like the presentations too, though, there are always balls. Next item, high school student trip, International Thespian Festival in Lincoln, Nebraska, June 12, 2015. We'll have to tell us about Thespian first.
First of all, as you can see, I'm not Rob D. Martino. You couldn't make it tonight, and so I'll just give you a rough overview of what he's planning. They're performing the Chapter Select Showcase in Nebraska. 10 kids are going next month. At the rate of $1,200 per person, they did some fundraising, and the families will be paying the rest.
And this is because they won, is that correct, they won a performance with the festival, and they get to go to the festival? Is that how that works? Okay, sorry, I butchered. They won something.
Yeah, I went to that, when I went to their pasta and show, dinner show that they did, there were some kids that did win for their small scenes that they did, pairs of students and some individuals for different dramatic scenes, and so that some were invited to also participate in that festival.
Awesome, thank you. Pleasure in the committee. Mr. Salvatore.
Thank you. How long is the travel?
I don't have the specifics, I can get them to you though.
Is it going to be any school time, or is it?
I don't have it wrong with me. Dr. Thorny?
All right, I'm just curious.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DeMonica.
It's after school, it's out.
On the form, it says here, June 22nd, and returning on June 26th.
That's after school, unless we moved the snow day date. Too bad. It could still snow, yes.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello, and a second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 7-0. Best of luck to the students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Miss Ducharme, I have to wait this long, high school student trip, home festival Orlando, Florida, April 2016.
So we're planning to take chorus, the Cumberland High School chorus and cleft singers to Orlando, Florida next year. Previous year, we went to Annapolis, Maryland, and we managed to rank, we had a gold rating, and we ranked second in the country of the choruses that were there. This year, we went to a Rhode Island choral festival, there were 26 ensembles, and four of them received superior ratings, which again is a top rating, and our cleft singers was one of those groups. So we're looking to expand even farther, and my kids really, really want to go to Orlando. They're really interested in our Universal Studios as their reward after festival. We're looking to have about 45 students and five chaperones. The cost is an overestimate of 1,300. It will come down once we have a solidified price for airline. And that's about it so far. We do tons of fundraising throughout the year, and that will definitely bring the cost down. Students do individual fundraising, we do group fundraising, just to bring the cost down. They will miss two days of school, as of right now, because we're trying to figure out flights, it would either be a Thursday or Friday, or a Friday and Friday and a Monday.
Any questions? Mr. Salvatore.
I apologize. Are they participating?
Yes, yes.
Excellent, all right, thank you.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mr. Dutton. Any further discussion? So I just have a question, how did the Pitch Perfect thing go today?
It went very well, it went over our time, we were very excited, we even got our own personal private theater. Some of us had to be here, and some of us had to be in national honor societies, but they gave us free tickets to go back another time. It's actually good to see them together, so it was a blast.
That's fabulous. So for the folks who don't know, they got to sing at the Lincoln Cinema World before the opening of the Pitch Perfect movie, so if you're into a cappella, that was the place to be tonight. Congratulations, nice job. So we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, discussion and our vote to approve stage two application with RIDE. So Mr. Fiorello, I think we've talked quite a bit about this.
Yes, we did, and it has been a very long pardon, pun, ride to get this accomplished. So I would move passage at this time of stage two application.
With aspiration, I hope. And do I have a second? Second by Mr. DeMonica. Any further discussion? I just want to say thank you all for your efforts, obviously I know it has been an arduous task, and appreciate trying to get to the root of the problem, and identify, and meet all the deadlines that seem to have gotten tossed in front of you like a locomotive. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so that carries 7-0. Send it off. Next item, personality recommendations, Mrs. Vogel.
I have three personal recommendations for you this evening. The first is retirement, so I request the advising consent of the school committee on the retirement of James Delillo, who's a teacher for the Cumberland School Department, which will be effective June 30th of 2015. Mr. Delillo has been with the Cumberland School Department for a line years.
Motion by Mr. DeMonica. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dutton. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Fiorello.
I'd just like to say that I've gotten a chance to know Janelle Delillo, from having taught my children for the last few years, and he's a wonderful guy, a nice new teacher, kids love him, and he's got the perfect personality for elementary school kids, will be sorely missed.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Next, I have a resignation for you. Requested advising consent of the school committee on the resignation of Mary Ellen Rossi, special educator at Cumberland Hill Elementary School, again, effective June 30th of 2015. Ms. Rossi has been a special educator at Cumberland for 10 years.
Pleasure. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second. Second by Mr. DeMonica. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 7-0.
Lastly, I have a leave of absence. I request the advising consent of the school committee on the FMLA leave of absence of Roseanne Mihal. I always say her name wrong.
Mihal.
Mihal, thank you. Grade two teacher at BF Norton Elementary School, it'll be effective May 30th of 2015, and will be through just the remainder of the school year.
Pleasure in the committee. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, school committee comments, school liaison reports. There you go, Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, this past, actually yesterday, the Journalism Club, which is an after-school program at BF Norton, had the pleasure of walking down Town Hall and interviewing Mayor Murray. There were a good dozen children or so. He was very gracious, children had a great time, it was a great experience for them. I'd just thank the mayor for that. Also, several weeks ago, I had sat down with Chief Demarest about the possibility of placing a stop sign across from Leport Middle School, Highland Ave, to try to slow down the traffic to give children a chance to survive the crosswalk. And he went down there, took his time, went down there, reviewed it, submitted it to the town council, Councilman Scullin presented it to the town council, town council, I believe, voted 7-0. And we now have a stop sign at the corner of Highland Ave and, I forget which street it is actually.
Morris.
No, it's not Morris.
Williams.
Williams. And it will make a tremendous difference for children crossing that street now. So I'd like to thank the town council and Chief Demarest.
Thanks for the effort, Mr. Fiorello. I'm sure the parents are very appreciative. I wonder if the students got an inside scoop on that news story that they did, can't wait to read it.
Yeah.
You'll have to forward to us a copy. Anyone else? Mr. Duffy.
Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just myself wanted to extend an appreciation to all the teachers within the district as well. And I'll just speak on what I knew what happened up at Cumberland High School, that there was numerous students who participated in remodeling or decorating teachers' lounges for them, and I will say they had a blast doing it, and I happen to know somebody who